This meeting of the Pots Grove School Board has now come to order. Let's go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, theverkin, and just as for all.
All right, we don't have any executive sessions that we have to discuss, so we'll take public comment. And I have one piece of paper submitted from Gwen Allen.
Hi, my name is Gwen Allen, and I relay in memory of my dad who lost his fight with cancer a year and three months ago. On behalf of your American Cancer Society, I would like to thank the Pots Grove School District for your continued support. Since 1998, this community has raised over $11 million in the fight against cancer. The society has and always will be volunteer-led and driven. So far this year in 2018, our community has raised over $290,000. The American Cancer Society will be doing so much with this money that we've raised. If we break down the numbers, our community will have funded either 14,000 personalized information kits, or 2,200 free wigs, or 5,500 free nights at Hope Lodge for patients and caregivers when they travel for treatment. Or access to resources through our 24-hour helpline on our website and through an 800 number for over 11,000 people. Excuse me. Cancer research is also being done right here in Pennsylvania. PA-specified research grants that are currently being funded total over $24 million. And research is being done at Fox Chase, Lehigh Valley Hospital, Penn State, Temple University, and Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, to name a few. An even greater impact on our community is the support network each Relay participant is a part of when they decide to join our Relay. This is an unmeasurable impact that Relay has on Pottstown. Our 2018 event added a spectacular survivor reception for 212 cancer survivors and their caregivers, with a meal provided by eight different community partners. We had 776 participants from every corner of our community, and 74 teams from many local businesses, organizations, and families. We even had firefighters walking in their full gear for the full 12 hours of our event. We had plenty of heat, rain, and lightning, but we still rallied together to bring hope for a future without cancer. With the history of this event being here for over 20 years, we look back and see how it would not have been possible without the countless volunteer hours, donation, and dedication of all our friends and neighbors. And now is not the time for us to slow down. We need to reinvigorate, rededicate, and even reinvent our fundraising efforts within our community. Every cancer patient, every survivor, every person who gets treatment will not have to -- oh, I'm sorry. So on behalf of our Relay family, we thank you for hosting our event year after year, and we look forward to confirmation of hosting our 2019 event again next year. Thank you.
Gwen, first of all, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
And as a cancer survivor myself, I know how important this is. So I appreciate all the volunteers who round the clock, year-round, fight the cause, and bring to attention and to help those who are struggling. So I thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Still working with the training wheels a little bit here, so I do need help from time to time. We had talked as a board about what we were going to do with the position. Basically, last month or last meeting, we were able to see our new members, so now we have nine again. But I don't like sitting in this chair if it's not my chair. So what I thought we would do as our first order of business tonight would be to hold a reorganization to at least identify a president of the board going forward. Don't care if it's me, but whoever is in this chair should be elected to be in the chair. That's just how I feel. Does anybody have any reservations or problems with doing that as our first order of business? Is there any special procedure I need to do for this meeting? Because it's not the first.
No, this is -- no, there's nothing. All you're going to do is elect a chair. If you're elected chair, then we need to elect a vice chair. If you're not, then I think our business is done tonight because we reorganized in December. Let me remind the board that these motions do not require a second. Somebody will put a name in the nomination. Bob, you're chairing the meeting right now. You'll see if there's any other names in nomination, as many as there are. And then there'll be a motion to close nominations. That will be -- and everybody always gets confused. That will be seconded, and we'll vote on that first. After we close the nominations, then we'll go back and we'll have a either roll call or a voice vote, depending where we are, how many candidates. There's one or two. I guess we could do a voice vote if we have five. I think probably we're going to need to have Dave call the roll. So let's play it out.
That being the case, we would need a motion, anybody that cares to make a motion, for the office of Chairman of the Board, President of the Board.
I'd like to make a motion for Rob Lindgren to be President.
Is that just the chair or the actual?
Well, it's a nomination. I took that as a nomination. Now, Bob, we'll see if there's any other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Anybody else wants to sit?
Who's opposed to nominations?
Here's my partner there.
All right, then we have a motion and a second to close nominations, and we'll now vote on that motion. All those in favor of closing nominations for President of the Board, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right.
I think we have a voice vote on the nomination on the floor.
Thank you. All those in favor of voting for the President, to be me, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. We'll go forward with the Vice President.
I will.
All right. So the next order of business would be to have nominations for a Vice President to fill my chair.
I'd like to nominate Al Leach as Vice President.
I was going to do the same thing, so.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Anybody?
I nominate Scott.
Okay. We have a motion for Scott. We have a motion for Al. Are there any other nominations? If not, a motion to close nominations be in order?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now we're going to vote on whether or not to close nominations for Vice President. All those in favor of closing the nominations for Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right. So we have two candidates, and we have nine of us. So this should -- we should be able to do this one tonight. We had some trouble last time. So, all those in favor of Al Leach?
Aye.
Aye.
That sounds like he wins. It's a six.
Well, I mean.
All right, well, all right. We'll do it.
Let me be clear about this. There's always this commotion about calling the roll, and actually, the school code never talks about a roll call vote. It talks about a recorded vote. So if you can record the votes, I don't know who's taking the minutes, then we're fine. If we know how people vote it. If we can't record them, then we should go around and ask people to vote.
Let's just do a roll call vote. How about we do that?
That's what I'd probably do.
Say who you want, who your choice is. We'll start with you, Mr. Nipper. Al?
Al.
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 Look at me, so it's not a question.
That's right.
So who did you vote for, Scott?
Okay, so yeah, your interpretation of the voice was correct.
So that was two to seven.
Mm-hmm.
That's a you, guy.
Seven to two. Congratulations, Al. Very good. All right, with that out of the way, and thank you very much for everybody. I do appreciate it. We'll get back to regular order and stay in regular order, if that's all right. Very good. So now the part that I wanted to hear. As being the second day, I'd like to see the first day presentation.
Right, absolutely. I'm really excited tonight to take the opportunity to really present to the board my first day presentation, as well as to the community. We had all 500 employees in the middle school auditorium, and it was a great kickoff with really the highlights and accomplishments. And I also want to share them with you, because I want you to understand that, and I want you to think about, as I asked the staff, think about all the accomplishments and highlights you have been part of as a board member. Because I'm going to show you over 60 in two years. So you need to know, I want you to think about that, because our staff thought about that. And, you know, everybody in that room, from our custodian, to our maintenance, to our grounds, to our support staff, to our, you know, obviously, our teachers, and our directors and administrators, all had a part in these accomplishments. And we used that day as a celebration. So I wanted to really take the opportunity to share that with you tonight and go over with you. And does that help? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't do that originally. So basically, we talked, you know, we had our welcome back, and I'm going to get to the extra degree and what that means as we move forward. But we had a lot of really pomp and circumstance. We honored, we started out the year by, you know, the Pledge of Allegiance, a welcome by Patty, Mrs. Grimm welcomed, along with Megan Delena. And then we honored all of our teachers who had 30, 20, and 10 years of service, which was, brought them up on stage and welcomed them and honored them. Then our "Fuel Up the Place 60" group did a brain break. So we were working for about 35, 40 minutes, and the whole audience did a brain break to really just refresh and energize before I got into my keynote. And again, these are just some slides that helped us. But we started out, and I think it's important that we thank the people that, this is the group of people that take care of us. Our custodial staff, our maintenance staff, grounds, technology, our faculty and staff, our directors and administrators, our administrative assistants that are in our buildings, our district office, and our facilities. And one of the things John Maxwell said, "Without these groups, we travel alone." We could not, we could not put on what we do for the district without this support group. And I think that's something that I do not take for granted. I know that everything that these particular groups do for us make us a better organization. So we honored them and said thank you to them, and helped us not only just to open up the school year, it's more, it's throughout the school year and the role that they play throughout that particular time period. So one of the things that I mentioned to the teachers, and I always challenge them, and this year's Welcome Back challenge was encourage the principal. And I wanted them, as a role model in the classroom on a daily basis, I wanted, I want them to portray the value of a good education. It's important that our students in the classroom understand that education's important, and there is a value. And you don't always know when that value will pay off, but it's going to pay off. And then we talked about the virtue, the good, the good, a good education, the value of that, the good of being a good person. And we talked about, finished up with, character. How it's important for teachers today to show our young students that from any age, from K to 12, to be honest and have integrity, and how important that is, and life skills that they will use the rest of their lives. So I challenged them there. And we always talk about our mission, because we always want to funnel back to our goals as a district, to educate and inspire all students to be productive, responsible citizens, and lifelong learners. We don't, we don't want to forget that piece. I mention to that every time I go out to the building, specific meetings that I have with them, to make sure that we understand really what our goal is on a daily basis. And then what I share with you at this point is, as we move forward together, is the highlights and accomplishments. And you can see the dates behind them of what we accomplished when we started back in 2016 together, the different pieces of curriculum, the measures of academic performance, and some of them you'll see, they're ongoing. We started in '16, but we continue in '18. Some of the things that we worked on this year that are bold, our analytic framework for measuring growth, that was our MAP piece, that's our ECRP piece. Obviously, that's all ties into PSSA, Keystone, AP, there's a whole big framework for our growth. And of course, we had our completion of our review for science as we implement that for this particular year. We continue on as we expand our course selection in '16, '17 with AP Government and Politics, Modern World and Conflict, you see the Algebra A and B. We had Special Education Math, and that was all, and development of the Autistic Support Classroom as well. For '16 and '18, we had, we added more choir options, we did name changes, and then we added this past year AP Seminar and Research. We continue with co-curricular initiatives. We added a volleyball team, a bowling team. Middle School Boys Lacrosse and Girls Volleyball will come to fruition in '18 and '19. And the board, obviously graciously, had our budget plans for this past year, added $25,000 to co-curricular in grades three through eight. And obviously, I know that Mr. Onsback and Mr. Drenzo are going to be working closely with the co-curricular pieces to really update you as we go along through that process. We did numerous of trainings over the last two years with our Bus Driver's Duty Age, Crisis Prevention Intervention, Social Thinking and Growth Mindset, our PASSAT training for our teachers, for our 1% of our students that need to take that special PSSA test, if you will, and the County Crisis Response Team and Save Schools. So we did a lot with that. In fact, our crisis team who was trained last year really got called out to an incident in the Perkerman Valley School District, so we could help there. In pupil services, these are the things that really all took place last year. There was a lot of action in this particular group. Our SWIVIS group got state recognition. We went through clinical monitoring, integration of new psychological testing kits, intervention committee review, and ELA in math, to really piggyback off of the curriculum work that we did the year before. Development of transition courses, which are important at all levels within our Special Education Program. Our Social Skills and Behavior Modification Curriculum. Development of the IST Model, which kicked off, which the board again supported last year. We'll be kicking that off. We are kicked, we have kicked that off. The Trauma-Informed Community, we kicked that off last year. We continue that with our in-service to really find out what kids come to school with and that invisible backpack. There's a lot of stuff that they come to school with, and what we want to do is train ourselves to do a better job of anticipating those needs of the students. And last year, obviously, and this year, the Pots Grove Village and Student Forum. From there, our technology and network infrastructure, there's some things we did, obviously, with those groups, with our wireless upgrades, classroom projector projects at the middle school, our district phone system was upgraded, we had recognition as an Apple Distinguished Program, also our Apple Teacher Professional Learning Program. We continue that even into this year. We've had six years of our STEAM Expo that has really celebrated our accomplishments in technology, in our classroom, and district-wide. We upgraded our district projectors in K-5. School Easy Integration took place, that'll continue to move forward. We created learning stories within our classroom with best integration and teaching practices. That library will continue to grow, and Google Expeditions. Our facilities and operations, obviously, you've all been a big part of this, you've seen it, this is really no surprise, but the completion of the high school building project, the high school solar project, we've done ticket booth and storied shed, that occurred in '16, '17. Obviously, our turf field concessions, our access road to the stadium, we replaced the West Chiller replacement, middle school domestic hot water boiler replacement took place this year, and the middle school kitchen equipment conversion. So a lot of things are happening at all, at all levels. As we move forward, facilities and operations continue with chalkboard renewal to whiteboards district-wide. We're changing our district-wide work order system, the middle school roofing project, which is, I think, all but done. Couple of things are just finishing up, I saw on the first day. Our middle school gas conversion project is finished. And one of the things, obviously, I think this board is most proud of is that as we've maintained the integrity of instructional programs and co-curricular activities the last two years with little or no tax increase. So I think that is a really big accomplishment that we all need to be proud of, and we share that throughout the community. We talked about, last year, we kicked off our Save School partnership. We had Al's training for administrators and our teachers. We did active shooter drills. We did school-wide opium presentations in our school district. We upgraded, again, the board had a hand in this, the district radio communication system, which we're practicing as we speak, and that is really, really going to enhance our readiness piece there for our staff and students. So if you take a look at these two-year things, two years of continued work and highlights, these are over 60, I think there's 62 to be exact. So it's something for us, they're points of pride for our staff, for administration, and obviously for the board, because you've all had part on it. So when you talk about the work that we've done in a short period of time, we've done a lot of work, and we can be very proud. From there, since I've had this position, we talk about foundations for success. Our teachers, we emphasize responsibility, respect, and safety. We want to set high standards and expectations across all academic behavior and social maturity levels. We want to foster collaborative progress solving. I think that's something we've done and made great strides with over the last two years, with a bottom-up philosophy that really comes up here to the board, where you have time to collaborate with teachers and administrators, and really feel free to air all your concerns, all your questions, and again, leave no student, parent, or colleague behind. I always remind our staff that we make connections one person at a time, and how important it is for communication and collaboration and building relationships. I also talk to them about being transparent and forthright at all times. And I think that's something that they hear me say in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and at the end of the year, because these are really pillars of strength for us. We want them to make connections with people in person, first of all. We want them to make, if we can't do it in person, there's a phone call, and third, email. I mean, that's something that, when it comes to being the communication and collaboration, those are three important bullet points there. We want to be a culture of change, and we want to, we want to build trust. And that's, that's important, you know, with our teachers, and our families, and our students. I always talk about this, anything, any projects that happen at the district level, or in the classroom level, building level, we want structure, to have some type of structure. We want our staff to pay attention to detail, and we want them to follow through. And that is something that helps us to be able to support our teachers and to support our staff at all levels if they follow these really simple steps. In 2016, '17, we had a video that went with this piece every day, and every day was really a picture of the influence that teachers have on a student. And you never want to take that for granted. So I wanted to go back and visit that history about, about the impact that teachers have on students on a daily basis, and the responsibility that they have on a daily basis. And that responsibility is a huge thing that they cannot take advantage of or take for granted, and that they do have power, okay? And not to, not to use that power in the wrong way. So I wanted to go back and really stress the impact, the responsibility that they have, and the power that they have to really do what's best for kids. From there, we talked about last year, we talked about calling all teachers, there was a presentation there. Our students need a sign to let them know you're there. And I think teachers needed to know, and they continue to need to know, that they're there for our students. And so we went, we went down that path and really explained that a little bit more in detail with an interactive piece, but I wanted to go back and visit that history. We also talked about no significant learning occurs without a significant relationship. And that really was reemphasized this year with trauma-informed as well. So this year, we carry that piece on, that relationship piece on, and we're asking our teachers to continually be resilient. We want them to have the capability of bouncing back or adjusting to challenges and change. We want that message to be delivered to our students as well. We want our teachers to focus on results. We want them to make lessons of the failures that they have, and we want them to continue on. We don't want them to get stagnant, we want them to learn from the mistakes, and we want them to continue to support our students, remind them, and encourage them as they move through their school year. So our focus this year, which will really tie into goals as we move forward, continue to focus on instructional practices that improve individual student achievement, we never need to, we can never lose sight of those pieces. Continue to focus on the data review process and analytic framework for measuring growth. Obviously, we want to continue to look at the data. Establish baseline goals and action plans, and review data on closing the achievement gap with historically underperforming students and other students. Other students is really, we care about everybody, but we need our most needed kids, we want to make sure that, that we're doing, we're reviewing the data, making good decisions. And of course, our trauma-informed community, it's important to understand the young, the students that are in front of us. So we led that into 212, the extra degree, and what makes, what a difference one degree makes. And we want our teachers, we want our administrators, because I went over this piece in an administrative update with our administrative team this summer, about the difference they can make in someone's life, whether it's their family, whether it's their building, or whether it's a tie-in with one of their goals in a building-specific group, about one little degree of effort. So that led us into what this difference makes. And this theme will carry out throughout the year administratively. I will take this message back out to the buildings in the fall again, to show the importance of doing a little bit more, a little extra, and what one degree of difference makes. Think about doing just a little bit more, okay? And think about what a small group of people can do if they put their minds to it, and the success that they can share, not only with an individual classroom or a building, but what it can happen in a community. So we're going to continue to really, to monitor that, to continue to stress those important key factors with our staff this year, with our administration, because we feel that that extra degree at this point is very, very important. So thank you for listening and your time. It was a great, great celebration. For that particular day, it was a great kickoff, and yeah, I was obviously happy to present, because I think it was, it was a good way to celebrate all the accomplishments that we did. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that presentation. I think that was a good reminder as to all of the different things that we're involved with, and all the different scopes of the different decisions that we make, and how they have an impact on the school district and on the community. So thank you for that reminder. Patty, I think you were there at the opening, representing the board. Would you care to, did you have any comments about that that you'd like to share?
Well, I was there and spoke, but Mr. Nipper and I were both together, and it was phenomenal, just thanking everybody and a good kickoff, and everybody was real positive. Of course, I always have to thank the custodians, because they got us together where we're at today. But it was really nice, we got an introduction at each school building by the principal of the new teachers, new staff, some of the new changes, they all spoke. And it was nice to go face-to-face and have the principals introduce their new staff. But you could just feel the positive energy. But you could just feel the positive energy, it was really a great morning. Mr. Nipper, anything you want to add?
No, but it was really an uplifting experience to see all the people gathered together, anxious to get started. I have great respect for all these people. I have enough trouble with three grandchildren, let alone what you're going to have to do with a class full of third and fourth graders. But it's really an invigorating experience, and it's good to get started in that kind of tone.
All right, so in that spirit, I guess it's time for us to get started with the regular action of our meeting. So, we'll start with our action items, if you'd like to take the meeting, please.
Thank you. Action items for personnel, starting with Section 5, 5.1. The administration is asking you to approve the administrative appointment as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to combine 5.1 through 5.7.
Can we keep out 5.1 for questions?
We have a motion to take 5.2 through 5.7 as one motion. Do we have a second for that? We have a motion and a second to take 5.2 through 5.7. So, hearing no objection, I guess we'll go ahead and have a vote. All those in favor of approving 5.2 through 5.7, signify by saying aye.
Just real quick, I will be abstaining from 5.5.
Does that work?
Again, it's certainly the board's pleasure. I mean, you can do the whole agenda, you can do one at a time. You can also do these, what I'll call lump motions, 5.1 through 7. It doesn't mean you can't ask a question. You don't have to necessarily separate it, but if you want to vote maybe differently, you want to separate it. But that's always the board's will and your prerogative as chair.
All right, I think that's fine. Going forward, we'll ask, for example, when we get to 6 or whatever, that we'll say, does anybody have an objection to anything before we make the lump motion? That way, we'll smooth it just a little bit.
Or a question even, maybe sometimes.
Sure. So, we have a motion to approve 5.2 through 5.7 with one abstention on 5.5 to be understood ahead of time. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. And your abstention is?
5.5 is my vote.
There you go. Okay, very good. So, now, we're going to go back to 5.1. Would anybody care to make a motion on 5.1, the appointment, for administrative appointment? We have a motion first. Well, actually, her motion got changed into the 5.2 to 5.7. So, 5.1 got dropped by the wayside as we moved hurriedly along. So, we need, so...
We need a motion.
We need a motion on 5.1.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve 5.1 administrative appointment.
Motion and a second, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on 5.1?
Couple of questions. What does the daily rate come out to as a full-year number? And how does that compare to what we have budgeted for that position? And part B of that question is, where are we at? When are we expecting to have somebody hired for that spot?
I can answer those questions. 87.5 is the annual for that. 350 times 250 days is the approximate days for an administrator. And it's well under the budgeted amount for the previous person in there, so there's some savings there. And we're working on the timeline, finalizing that actually tomorrow. We had 92 applicants, so we're very proud of that fact. And we're going to work our way through those and come up with a timeline, and how we're going to set up all the interview process, including the board at certain points and all that sort of thing. So, we're going to start really finalizing that tomorrow.
Okay, are there any other questions regarding 5.1? Mr. Maddes, Vice Principal. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. Sword or without objection?
Okay, moving on to number six, action items for business. We go to 6.1, Ron, a transportation agreement. We're asking the board to authorize administration to enter into a transportation service agreement with CMD Services Incorporated for the 1819 school year as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on 6.1?
Question, mileage, dollar four, that's per mile? Is that correct?
That's correct. That is only if we ran a bus from them, which we don't typically do. That's an unusual circumstance.
Same with the hourly labor at the bottom there. That is a driver that we can't supply through our staff, that they would have to supply. The last two items virtually never occur. They're in the contracting case, but they never occur.
With that in mind, I'll vote yes, otherwise I wasn't happy with the percent increase.
Understood.
With what you said.
All right, are there any other questions on the transportation agreement? If not, then all those in favor of approving the agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. All right, very good, thank you.
Moving on to 6.2, postage machine folder insert lease. We're asking the board to award the lease for a postage machine and folder inserter to KBS 360, the lowest responsible quote as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on this?
Sorry, quick question. What is, how does this compare to what we paid previously?
The incumbent is the Pitney Bowes, which is the first item on the list, so significantly lower.
I would take this opportunity to say, never apologize for asking questions. This is our job, so please feel free to ask questions about anything that you're not comfortable or don't know about. So, all those in favor of approving this agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. All right, very good.
Okay, moving on to action items for education. 7.1, we're asking the board to recommend, all right, we're asking the board to approve the conference attendance as submitted.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second for conference attendance at a Wilson reading system. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we use the Wilson reading system throughout our curriculum? We do. Wilson reading, Ms. Paciro, is that for, I'm trying, I can't think, dyslexic?
Reading department.
The reading department?
Through Title I reading.
Is that supported by the MCIU?
Wilson reading? Wilson reading is an effective reading intervention program supported by the MCIU and all of the reading associations in the state and nationally.
Very good, thank you. All right, are there any other questions? If not, we'll have our votes. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. Sword or...
Okay, moving on to 7.2, conference attendance. We're asking that you approve the conference attendance as submitted for our four-county business office officials' fall workshop.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions at all? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. Very good.
Okay, moving on to 7.3, leadership tri-county conference. We're asking that you approve Ron Linky's participation in this leadership program sponsored by the tri-county Chamber of Commerce as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the conference?
Yeah, I have a question regards to the benefit of this conference. I'm not exactly understanding the conference at all.
Thank you. It's really, it's not a conference, so I'll apologize for that piece. It's a leadership program, and put on by the tri-county Chamber of Commerce. And last year, if you remember, Mr. Carwell went through it. And what it really, what it does for us is, and one of the things that I became part of last year was I'm a current board member of the tri-county Chamber of Commerce. And what it does for us is, it just helps us integrate ourselves into the business community. And I think that piece has really helped us create connections that we didn't have before. And I think if you remember, at a previous meeting, I'm going to ask, actually, I want to bring this up later on in new business, about asking board members to come with us to different chamber events, because I think it's important that they see us, they see you, and you get a feel for how we can interact. Because there's a lot of things with transitions within our community and community relations that we want to be part of. And this allowed, really, allowed Jeff to be part of this community. And now, he's a board member of a nonprofit, the Pottstown Tennis, Greater Pottstown Tennis Association. So, he's infiltrated, for lack of a better word, but...
We really need to go up with a better word.
Yeah, but he is really, he has, he's taken his expertise and facilities in helping that organization and moving that piece forward. So, we thought it was a worthwhile program. For him, he thought it was a worthwhile experience, and we really just want to continue to expand, you know, our integration in the community with our professional staff. I also feel too that this is, it's a good piece for us as far as professional learning from Mr. Linky. I think those pieces will enable him to, you know, I think, help us down the road with other components of leadership in the district and our community.
Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. Very good, congratulations.
Thank you. 7.4, mentor teachers. We're asking the board to approve the teachers as mentors for newly hired staff as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the mentor teacher assignments?
Mentor teachers are volunteers?
Sort of.
Sort of kind of.
They actually receive a slight...
Further involvement. Sorry?
How many is this?
I believe it's $500.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that's one question. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. All right, thank you very much.
Moving forward to action items. This is a very important appointment tonight. And our recommendation to the board is to appoint a junior class member, Brianna Mayberry, to serve as student board representative for the next two years, ending in June 2020, as submitted.
Motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments? What's that? Not a comment. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, say no. All very good, congratulations. I would like to thank the administration and all the folks who are involved in this, getting the students involved. We had five excellent, excellent candidates from whom to choose. As we said, we couldn't have made a bad choice, so we're very happy to have you, and we appreciate all the work that you're doing, that everybody's doing, to bring us such fine candidates and children. So, there you are.
Okay, moving on to number nine, Joint Operating Committee. Mrs. Grimm, you have a report.
Actually, I do have a report, they had to forward it because we were a little busy. I had to miss the JOC meeting that night. Actually, all of us, we missed it. So, Mr. Mortson did send me some notes. We do have a new principal, Mr. Chomnisky, and I actually was able to go to a meet-and-greet breakfast with him. And again, the energy he has over there, ready to jump into the, you know, jump right into him. We call it shaken and bacon, you know, but seems very nice. He did a really nice presentation to all the teachers also, so we're really excited, and we welcomed him. We have about 596 students, but we're still at the time where some change their minds, so we still have a fluctuation up and down daily. But the numbers, again, just keep growing over at the Western Center. Chris says we had some special events right out of the gate, so please mark your calendar for the 9/11 ceremony to start at 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday, 9/11. Our Protective Services will be doing a flag-raising ceremony to honor those who lost their lives on that tragic day in 2001. They have invited local police, fire, EMS, military personnel to be in attendance as well. And this is, if you do have an opportunity, this is a beautiful ceremony to attend. This week, our teachers reported back for in-service. We had a wonderful opening day filled with lots of information, and even some team-building activities for the teachers. There was a lot of technology updates, the Mrs. Hessel, including teachers getting back to their new computers. Mr. Chomnisky, which is the new principal, did an excellent leading in the in-service, talking about his goals and expectations as humming around the building, now putting the last-minute touches on their classroom. On Tuesday and Wednesday, our staff received mental health training in relation to better understanding adolescents and the issues they may have, they may be facing. We have learned techniques on how to handle and appropriately report issues related to the possible mental health crisis. So, they're ready to roll. The theme this year is Together We Build the MCCTC. And our next meeting will be, I know you put it in here, it will be on 9/10, Monday, 9/10/18.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to the end of the so-called scripted part. So, now, we'll go to new business. I know that you always bring something to the meeting.
I have.
Okay, what do you have?
Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. I just wanted to, I sent an email out to the board last week regarding Act 44. So, I just, I really wanted to make it official. One of the duties of the superintendent via Act 44 is, and the Act 44 is really the Save Schools Initiative by the state. And we obviously have really put ourselves in a good position with our Save Schools Committee that we already have intact. And so, we need somebody in-house to monitor this program. So, I'm going to appoint Dr. Harney. He's graciously accepted that role within the organization. And obviously, he's going to use, really, the plethora of support that we have behind him with our directors and administrators to, you know, obviously, make this commitment to save schools as we can to do that. So, I just wanted to let the board know. Obviously, I sent the email out on Act 44, but I wanted to let you know officially tonight that Dr. Harney is going to lead that position for us. He'll be invited to state-level events, county-wide events, state-level events, so we'll have a say in really what goes on at the state level within that act. So, I just wanted to share that with the board. Any questions? We'll follow up there.
The only question I have is on that, we talked a little bit about this at the MCIU meeting. And there was a question about the appoint or not. There was a question about whether or not this appointment required a vote of the board for this Save Schools. I mean, I don't think it's, sorry, I don't think there's a clear answer to that. I mean, if... It wouldn't hurt, is that what you're telling me?
It wouldn't hurt, but I mean, either way, I mean, yeah, go ahead.
Because there's some ambiguity, I would prefer to have a motion on this. I mean, your appointment is recognized, we're going to, I'm assuming we're going to approve it, but I'd like to have that vote, only because I couldn't get a clear definitive answer ahead of time.
Right, and that's...
Even for Mr....
And Dr. Harney, I think the act really said it was responsibility of superintendent to make that appointment within the district.
That was, every presentation I've seen, the PASMA presentation and all the articles do say it's a superintendent appointment, but there are districts that are doing it this way.
We'll just ratify it.
But it doesn't have to be, yeah, either way.
It's Bill's appointment, but we'll ratify Bill's appointment.
That's it, right, very good.
Make a motion to ratify Dr. Shirk's appointment of Mr. Harney to the position of, what's the title?
School Safety and Security Coordinator.
School Safety and Security Coordinator.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the appointment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Thank you. Done and done.
Thank you. I also share with the board about Act 55, which is a, a new stipulation for newly elected or appointed board of directors. It starts this, this fall. And I know, Tina, you're, you're part of the first class. We've looked, we've looked to gain recommendations or the website, really, nothing's really up to be told yet, but as soon as we get information, you'll get information. And for the rest of the board, as they, as they become, as they go for reelection and get reappointed, and there's a two-hour course for them, the initial course is four hours. So I just wanted to share that with, with you and just, and, and understand our commitment for that. We'll, we'll keep, we'll keep the board abreast on that, on that particular commitment. Yeah.
Is there any cost involved in that? Do you know? Like, does...
Great question.
The statute, as I recall reading it, and I'm doing off the top of my head, Patty, I, I don't think allocates a cost. I'm gonna think for the moment PSBA is gonna pick that up. Is there a charge with the training? But we'll see. We're not gonna have a choice, and it'll be the districts, in my view, it'll be our cost to reimburse if there is. I, I don't think we can make that an obligation to the individual board member.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I just wanted to go back, we, we talked about this really several weeks ago, about Social Sentinel, which is, allows us to have an online presence to monitor any threats to us in our social media presence. I just wanted to ask the board to go back in the literature that we passed out. I'd like to bring that to a vote at the 9/11 meeting. It's a $2,000 cost. At, we're in a consortium with the IU, and I think it's just another, gives us another layer that we can monitor, the outside organization will monitor those analytics for us. And I, I, I think it's worth at least a shot this year to see what exactly, if it does help us monitoring our Facebook, our Instagram, just our social media and around, around our community. Because they, they, they sort of encompass our community, they have key, key words and names that help do it. So, I just, I know I mentioned to the board several weeks, several weeks ago, but I wanted to let, let you know that I'd like to bring that to a vote next time. So if you have any questions, we can talk about it now.
Just one quick thing, if you wouldn't mind, just give a, we did see this, I do know what you're talking about, we, we did have a little bit of literature, but I'm not sure a lot of the folks...
Okay. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. Surely, basically, what this does, it's gonna save us time that, as far as sifting through possible leads, if you will. They have the analytics, Social Sentinel has analytics to help us be more efficient and to alert us to threats that are shared publicly on social media. Social Sentinel gives us the insight and the oversight and the resources to monitor this. And what they do, they will alert us to threatening language. And they have a library of threatening language that has been tested to help us, you know, obviously stay safe, stay focused on our day-to-day operations. So, it just enhances our ability to identify risks, risk assessments, and helps us manage, manage this, this wide world of social media, which is really, really big. So, we think it's gonna be a good tool for us.
I did have a question. Do you know who's the person, have you assigned who's gonna be the one receiving the, the warnings as they come in?
I want, once we make the commitment, then we'll, we'll have a Social Sentinel person sit down with us, create an account, and go over those particular protocols. I mean, building administration, those types, you know, building administrators will probably be the first, first line in that.
Well, the reason I was asking, because the research I was doing on it, there were a lot of the interviews was the fact that, and I don't remember if it was 40,000 or 400,000 words, but their point was, the issue was that it was non-contextual. So, if somebody, if a student said, "Hey, how'd you do in the test?" Well, I bombed it. You would get a warning message because the word bombed was in that. And if it happened at 2:00 a.m., the warning, at least at the articles I was reading, someone was getting a red notice at 2:00 a.m. So it just, you know, something to think about for that, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that we're, we're willing to walk, walk ourselves through that, those, those growing pains. And, you know, we'll, we'll monitor that. Once we get it, once we get it set up, we'll keep you alerted to what really will happen, how it, how it's, how it's managed. Yeah. But I wanted to, I wanted to make that commitment first, and then we'll get the details from Social Sentinel, exactly how, how that is to set up. Yeah.
Okay. So, because this was item of new business, we do have to have public comment, or since we have a question...
We're not taking action.
We're not taking action.
You only would require, I apologize. We'd only require a public comment on a new item if it was a motion. You have to take public comment on a item before you take action on it. And so that's when we take public comment up front, and I'm always quick to advise, if something comes up during the meeting, you take public comment on it. But you're not required when it's just an informational item, I don't, Bill's just...
Well, our next, our next, on the agenda is public comment, so can you, we just...
Just a question, not a comment. Will the...
Why don't we wait till a public comment question period? Let us finish our business.
Isn't that what we're in? Not yet. No, we're still, we're still in new business. We're wrapping it up, as soon as we wrap it up. Promise.
And my last piece to the board, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, was the, the Chamber Breakfast, the Legislative Breakfast event, that it's going to occur on Friday, September 14th. So, Mr. Lindgren, I'll just, I'll just ask you if, to, if we could have a representative from the board to, to come with administration that morning.
Yes, there will be a representative with you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're going, Bob?
We'll, we'll see. We'll talk about it and see who wants, who wants to go and...
Yeah.
I'll go.
All right.
Whereas...
I'll share that, I, my, my goal was to, to have everybody take a turn. I'm not, no, no one's gonna be left out.
I was gonna ask, did you send out a list of things, so we can just get it circulated?
Uh, we, I get month, I get, I get monthly information, so, and, and, you know, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna attend every event, but we're gonna, we're gonna attend to, you know, those, those particular pieces. But yes, we can do that, and we will have events that everybody will have an opportunity to be part of.
Well, I know I have at least three volunteers, so you won't, you won't be short on this one, all right?
Yep.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. Okay. Does any, we have a, we have a finger on the buzzer here. Does any other member of the board have item of new business?
Just in regards to the relay, when do we normally, or when do we need to approve their use of the facilities for the summer? Is it something we should just do tonight and take care of it?
If the board's so inclined, I'm sure they'd appreciate that. If there's any concern about it, I, I think they, they would like to know sooner rather than later, so they can make alternate plans.
How about if I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the relay for life to use our facilities at the high school here on Saturday, June 1st, 2019.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Since we are gonna be taking action on this, now we will take public comment from anybody who cares to have public comment on this item, and we'll be back to the other one that was not being acted on after this.
You may have a guess, society would like to thank the board and thank the Pottsboro School District very much for your participation.
Thank you.
Okay. Any members of the board have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So order without objection. Good for another year. All right, so that's one item of new business.
Okay, so, as the board secretary, PSBA has sent me an email about PSBA officer elections. We, as a board, are supposed to each, like, enter one vote as, and this is for president-elect, vice president, eastern at large, I have no idea what that is, section eight advisor, seat one, seat two, seat three. Anyway, all but one of the seats that's being voted on literally has one person running, so we don't have any choice as to who to vote for. Okay? The last seat, you can vote for two, and there are three people running. And that's the Forum Steering Committee. It's a two-year term. I, I can just go ahead and vote for somebody as...
What does it do?
The representative. It's due by October...
One just circulated, let's see if there's a comment.
Um, I, I'm in a different page now. I'm not sure exactly what. It's October something that it's due.
We have time.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it. I just figured I'd get it out of the way.
Well, because somebody's gonna ask. I suspect that some of them will, if they, we've gotta pick two out of three for one seat, probably we oughta have the names ahead of time of the board members.
That's fine, I can, I can send it. So, okay, next time.
All right, no action on that tonight. Does anybody else have any items? Yes?
Yes, I wanted to just quickly mention, we yesterday had a lockdown, medical lockdown. And while I firmly believe that, as a parent of the students here at the district, regardless of cause of lockdown, we definitely need to be notified, however you're listed in Schoology, text, robocall, email. I guess what struck me was the, the nature of the lockdown and the fact that it had hit our, our very public news, and sometimes, sometimes more than not, it can open up to commentary that's generated online. And I think that putting myself in the position of that student, or if I'm the parent of that student, I don't think that I would prefer that being out. While no names are mentioned or specific details, I'm just wondering if we could open the dialogue up as far as how maybe that particular lockdown in nature, we might possibly just handle that in a different manner.
My comment would be that regardless of what we do, somebody will post on Facebook or tweet about it, and there will be dialogue about it, whether we want it or not. So, that'd be great, but I'm not sure how feasible that would be. I'm open to suggestion, I mean, I think we should discuss, I just, I'm, I don't know that we would ever be able to control it, because you would have to pretty much have the monitors say, "Nope, you're bringing up a topic," but then they'll just find another venue. So, that's my concern there.
Mrs. McIntyre, obviously, we, we discussed this, you know, we, we don't, we, I don't make really a lot of, those decisions in isolation, and I want to hear from my, my group. And, you know, it, it went out first, obviously, you know, building specific, and that's, that's really what it was, building specific. But what we found out was, some of the buildings specific had siblings other places. So now they're getting alerts throughout the district, and it's the first day of school. Okay? It wasn't the 89th day of school, it was the first day of school. So it created, it elevated a, a little bit. So, that went out in social media circles, so that circled back to us from, you know, from the media. So, so we, we just responded with factual information. That, that's all, you know, because we're not giving name, names of what exactly it was, we're not doing that because of, of protection of our students. So, but, but we wanted the factual information to get out, that it was a medical lockdown. There wasn't like a condition, like, it wasn't like, we're not making this stuff up. So, there was a couple of things that, that elevated, maybe normally wouldn't, but there was enough sibling connections throughout the district that we were getting calls on. So we felt that it was important for us to, to go more district, send that district message out. So is that always a protocol? No, it's not. So, that's, that was sort of, you know, why we, why we did what we did with that particular thing. But the confidentiality piece of, of the families and the students are always foremost in front of our minds when we make those decisions.
Yeah, I think for me, you know, having the district be aware, because as you mentioned, you're gonna have siblings, and, I mean, when my kids were in school, there were medical lockdowns, so I would get the text messages, my kids were concerned for a friend. I think for me, it's when it would hit the newspapers and the reporting agencies, and it's like, again, just personally speaking, I don't, that I didn't, I didn't like that.
Right.
Yeah. How you avoid that, I'm not sure. And I understand the reporting. As I said, you want to come out with the accurate, accurate information, because it's such a world of needing to know right now, needing to know five minutes ago. It's just the nature of it for me.
And, and, and your point's well taken. In fact, we even, I, I think, we even waited to the afternoon, because I wanted to make sure, I didn't, I, I really, I try not to react to social media that quick, I just, because we need time to sort of gather our own thoughts and be thoughtful. So, we waited a couple hours before we did that. So, we'll continue to do, do, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a balance, we'll continue, and we always, we always try to, to do what's best, you know, for the families and the kids. We'll just continue to do that.
Thank you.
What would it look like if we did the robocalls to whoever was necessary, you know, that building or district-wide, but kept it off Facebook? I, I hear and agree with what... No, 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 no. I'm saying with our decision to place it on Facebook, I hear and agree with Jim, that it's, somebody will paste, post it, but I don't know that it should be us. I do agree that the parents need to know. We didn't post it on Facebook. Okay. Thank you.
That was one I, I wanted to ask.
District did. On the high school page.
Yes. Quick question. You said you waited until the afternoon.
I think, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm gonna say, I'm still getting the emails.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I was confused. I was like, wait a second, I know mine came in the morning.
The district, the district responds, Mrs. Custer.
Okay.
I think the district responded later in the day, the high school responded almost as me...
That's why I got to...
Once, thank you. Did, did everybody hear Dr. Zaygar? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff, yeah.
Okay. My own personal preference is that we always err on the side of putting more information out, consistent with confidentiality and privacy, HIPAA and all the other things that More facts, more information is always better than less. And if we go down the, you know, everybody uses slippery slope? Me too. If you go down the thing and say, "Well, we're not gonna do it in this one case, there's another person that's gonna have an equally compelling argument for this other case, and this other case, and what about this?" So I, I, as broadly as possible, I'd like to share the information with as much of the community as possible. We're talking on the one hand about making inroads and making connections, then on the other hand, it's like, "Yeah, except for you guys in the press." So we gotta, gotta be consistent, I think.
One of the things I would like to say is that, you know, when you do provide the information, it's nice, because then it, it cuts down on the amount of supposition from people where it's like, "Oh, I heard," you know, whatever the case may be. So it is nice to do that. Maybe we can also, in the district, or anytime we put out a bulletin, put out there, "Please refrain from starting rumors with," you know, and just try to, you know, get them to think responsibly.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, worries or concerns? All right, now we're ready for public comment.
Again, just...
Oh, you do, wait.
I'm sorry, Joe. I didn't see a move.
I had one more. I just wanted to personally thank all of our coaches, all of the people that took the photography, all the people that helped in every way that the Booster Club could make our athletic program this year. The athletic program, as many probably already know, that is our largest fundraiser that goes back to the school district. We, of course, support all of the schools, all of the athletic teams and such like that, and the high school and everything like that. Supporting through the local businesses, we've raised already over $2,600 just on creating the program, and then obviously, selling the program and everything like that's gonna be additional dollars like that. And of course, all of that money goes back to the school and obviously like that. So I want to thank everybody that was involved with helping us do that program.
Very good. Okay, I'll look around at everybody this time. Is anybody, anything else?
Three questions, sir. Based on my familiarity with Social Sentinel in a different context. First question, the library of quote "threatening language" close quote, will that be publicly released?
I can't respond to that, I don't have the answer to that right now.
Actually, they say in their website that they do not release that information.
Thank you. Second, will Potts Grove be adding its own keywords to the library of threatening language?
We've yet to meet with Social Sentinel, we're waiting for board approval to set up our profile.
Do you anticipate that's going to be the case?
I would have to wait to, I haven't, I don't have enough information from Social Sentinel yet to what that profile will look like.
Third and last question, in addition to whatever threats are posed on social media, will the software also be used for reputation management online for the district?
I don't believe so, Joe.
Should we ask Social Sentinel about that, too?
Right.
One of the reasons that we're bringing this up ahead of time, well in advance of any vote that we might take or any action that we might take, is because none of us are experienced with this platform, okay? We know about the data mining that goes on with people that we don't have any relationships with, you know, what goes on with Google, what goes on with Facebook and all these other people, and what they sell and what they don't sell. The information's out there, this is another service that does the same thing. It's big data mining for, for safety concerns. We have, you know, the new act that just has been signed, and we just took action on part of it tonight, and many, many times, many of the failures that have happened, and many of the attacks that have happened, they say, okay, when I go back and look at all the dots, and I can connect all the dots in the, in the luxury and the fullness of time, knowing what eventually happened, I can see there's this indicator, and this indicator, and that indicator. Nobody put them all together. Somebody is offering to say, hey, we're gonna look at social media that's posted publicly. We're not going into anybody, as far as I know, we're not going into anybody's, you know, private accounts, that's not the intention of this, that's not what they're telling us that they're going to do. They're going to want it publicly posted, so when people say, why didn't you know, it was right there on Facebook for anybody to see? Now we've got somebody who's watching that for us, we're not paying an administrator to do that, we're not paying 100, you know, people at home to do that, we've got a service who's doing it anyway for a large area, so it's something that we think is worth investigating further. We may get good answers, we may get bad answers, but we feel it's only responsible for us to look into this and decide if it's right for Potts Grove. So we welcome any of your comments on this, on research that you may have done, you see Jim's already started doing the work on it, so we welcome any other investigative efforts and questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Bill, can you add, Dr. Shirk, can you add about the IU's connection and other districts that are using or looking into using this?
We're just, we're working through the IU within a consortium rate. It just, it just, it just helps us on cost, because it would have been, you know, over $1.50 a student, so it helps us, helps smaller districts like us. So we're getting a flat-
Other districts are using this?
Other, yeah, Montgomery County, Montgomery County is pretty much all on board with this, too. And you know, Joe, just to expand, you know, I say this with tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, I think this is an important piece, but, you know, when it comes to threat assessments, I don't, when it comes, that is very important to us, but I want us to be transparent with this, but at the same time, there's that security piece that we need to keep it, you know, within, within our administrative group and Social Sentinel, so, so that we can monitor appropriately. I mean, I just, I don't want it to be, you know, it's, because I want it to be used for all the advantages that they say it can be, and so I don't, I don't, I don't want kids setting us up for not success, because they know they, we have it, and they can just run, you know, have us chasing our tail. So there's, there's that piece to this as well, so that concerns me a little bit about how it's all gonna shake out.
Thank you. That was it, the three?
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. That being the end of our business, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Sim.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Done and done. Thank you, Bill.